Officer, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then will somebody speak for the IDA?
Christine Curtis, Executive Administrator, will speak about the project.
Okay. Officer, right?
Yes.
And then will somebody speak for the IDA?
So when you're ready, Kevin Callahan, we'll let Kevin Gillette know and we can get started.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready to go.
Okay. And we are live on YouTube, so we're ready.
All right. My name is Kevin Gillette. I'm the Vice Chair of the Tioga County Industrial Development Agency. The agency is conducting this hearing pursuant to general municipal law, Section 859-A, to seek public comment on an application for financial assistance submitted by Temple and Liberty LLC. The acceptance of the filing by the agency does not infer any position on approval or disapproval of the financial assistance requested.
I'm sorry. Can everyone mute their microphones? I'm getting a lot of background interference.
I don't know how to mute it.
That iPhone.
It's not going to work. Plus, everyone mutes. Whoever, whoever iPhone is.
I can mute them.
You could, please.
Mute everybody, Christine, and just bring Kevin on.
Okay. Yep, everyone is muted. Okay. Kevin, I think you have to unmute yourself now, I'm sorry. I can't.
So, Mr. Gillette, I think you're.
All right. We get it. All right, so you want me to start that over? You want me to start where I left off?
Start over. Thank you.
All right. My name is Kevin Gillette, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Tioga County Industrial Development Agency. The agency is conducting this hearing pursuant to general municipal law, Section 859-A, to seek public comment on an application for financial assistance submitted by Temple and Liberty LLC. The acceptance of the filing by the agency does not infer any position on the approval or disapproval of the financial assistance requested. No position will be taken by the agency until all public hearings and comments are concluded. A copy of the cost benefit analysis provided by the Tioga County IDA is available on the Tioga County IDA website. Notice that this hearing was published on June 7, 2021. In the Press and Sun Bulletin, each person wishing to speak shall state his or her name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization or entity, please identify that organization or entity. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. This hearing shall remain open until 5:30 PM or longer if public comment warrants. I wanted to remind you that the purpose of this hearing is to afford you an opportunity to make statements and comments on the application and project plan of the IDA. Your comments will be considered by the IDA in making a decision. This is not a question and answer session. Please remember to identify yourself and the organization or entity that you are speaking on behalf or behalf of prior to the comment. First, I'll ask Executive Administrator Christine Curtis to explain the benefits requested by Temple and Liberty LLC.
Thank you, Kevin. So Temple and Liberty LLC has requested economic development assistance for the proposed project on the corner of Temple and Liberty Street in the village of Awigo. The project contains thirteen formerly blighted lots that were purchased by the Tioga County Property Development Corporation, also known as the Land Bank, and are therefore tax exempt presently. The site plan includes two townhouses with six units in each and a thirty-three unit apartment building for a total new rental unit of forty-five in the village of Awigo. Overall, this project will eliminate blight, revitalize a key neighborhood in the village of Awigo, and provide affordable housing options which were identified as a need in the 2017 Tioga County Housing Study. Temple and Liberty LLC will be investing fourteen million dollars into the project. The company's total payments in lieu of tax to be dispersed to the county, town, village, and school over the lifetime of the pilot agreement, if approved, are six hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. The total of all of the benefits anticipated to result from this project are, at a very conservative estimate, ten point six eight million dollars. This includes new wages and economic infusion of additional disposable income resulting from the anticipated new ninety-six residents in the area. Also included in this benefit estimate is seven hundred thousand eight hundred dollars in new additional Village of Awigo sewer revenue. The exemptions and abatements requested by Temple and Liberty are as follows. A sales tax exemption in the amount of two hundred, two hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents, half of which is local and half of which would be going to the state. The mortgage tax exemption in the amount of two thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and the real property tax payment of nine hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents at the projected estimate, for a total cost to the county of approximately one point one six million dollars. So the net benefit to the county resulting from this project is approximately nine point five million dollars. And this doesn't account for the, the increased capacity to accrue a workforce and an increased population in the area. So that's my summary. Thank you, Kevin.
With the first person wishing to speak, please do so now.
So. Let me go down the list of participants, and I will just ask if you'd like to comment. Ralph Kelsey?
Yes. You want me to go first?
Yes, please. Please proceed, and I will back up the time.
I, I am here on behalf of the Tioga County Land Bank, or if you will, the Tioga County Property Development Corp. Due to the fact we've been working for the last, I guess, I would say now, a couple, three years, and attempting to deal with some of the findings that were revealed in the study done by, I believe it was the village, the county, and the IDA, again, many years ago. The need for quality housing, or affordable housing, for those of our community that are, that are, that might be struggling, the, the age of it and the challenges of it, really brought us to, to the understanding of the need and, and, and working to figure out how to address that need. As a result, the, again, the Land Bank has worked diligently trying to aggregate or put together a number of properties over on Temple Street, Liberty Street, to accommodate enough of a footprint to put up a multifamily unit and, and some du, a couple, I don't know, forget how many duplexes. But, and we are partnering, at this point in time, if this all moves forward, with the Ithaca Neighborhood Housing, which we feel really fortunate to have, be involved. So with all that said, and, and, and understanding too, that the, for the benefit to the county is not only, if you will, from, if you will, from the conditions of, of housing for, for those that need it, but economically, long term, this should benefit the village, the county, and the school, due to the fact that some of the taxes were never collected on the properties, we're purchasing, or they were empty lots, or a number of different reasons. So this eventually will generate revenue in which we didn't have before. So I'd like to read a letter, if you would, from, from the Property Development Corp. Dear Ms. Curtis, the Tioga County Property Development Corp is, is in full support of the application for financial assistance made by Temp, made by Temple and Liberty LLC to the Tioga County Development Agency. The vision of the Tioga County Property Development Corp is to promote increased quality homeownership by improving vacant and abandoned residential and commercial properties, addressing downtown revitalization, and building partnerships to promote increased affordable housing opportunities for residents. The Tioga County Property Development Corp is currently in the process of obtaining, demolishing thirteen blighted properties located on Temple and Liberty Streets in the village of Awigo. Tioga County Property Development Corp then intends to sell the vacant lots to Temple and Liberty LLC for redevelopment. The proposed housing development will create additional forty-five affordable residential housing units in Tioga County, as well as revitalize, revitalize a key neighborhood in the village's downtown core. The project not only supports the mission and vision of the Tioga County Property Development Corp, but it also aligns with the identified housing needs and strategies outlined in the 2017 Tioga County Housing Study and Village of Awigo's 2014 Comprehensive Plan. Overall, this fourteen million dollar project will eliminate blight, revitalize, revitalize a key neighborhood in the village of Awigo, and provide a much-needed affordable housing options for Tioga County residents. The Tioga County Property Development Corp looks forward to the progression of this project and our continued partnership with Temple and Liberty LLC and the Tioga County IDA. Best regards, Ralph Kelsey, Chair.
Thank you, Ralph. Mike Barata, would you like to speak today?
Yeah, it is. So I guess my comments, Mike Barata, Mayor, Village of Awigo, resident, also on the Land Bank with Ralph, so I guess I would echo his comments from the Land Bank side, from the village side, I guess, I'm excited to see this neighborhood changed. We do need the housing, as was said in the studies and the plans and all that. I guess the only thing I'm concerned about is really the length of the pilot, and as, from a mayor's side, from a village standpoint, it's hard for me to sell a pilot to the residents when this fourteen million dollar project is going to pay five thousand dollars in village taxes. I've got properties on Front Street and Main Street that pay more than five thousand dollars in village taxes a year. So that makes it tough for our residents to buy into, especially when it's for thirty years.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, I think we have Laura Spencer. Would you like to comment today, or are you just watching?
Hi, I'd like to comment. Can you see me now?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Laura Everly. I'm on the, I'm a trustee on the village board, resident of the village of Awigo. So I guess the things I'd like to comment on are, I'm, I'm feeling opposed to the project. In the financial assistance part, it says the real property tax is estimated is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That, like, after this building is built, it's like fourteen million or something, right? And then.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, and then the tax relief was close to, like, a million dollars. And so, like, after, and I saw that, like, the building material cost was like five million dollars or something. And so after, I just don't understand that calculation, right? That it costs that much in materials, and then, sorry, and then the, the pilot, thirty-year pilot is calculated at, you know, just like a, the small fraction of all that. So, uh, so that's one question. I didn't understand what the pilot is, a deviated pilot, and what that means. Oh, yeah, the deviation from the uniform pilot policy. The, the location concerns me because it's in a floodplain. And we, on the village board, we recently changed, sorry, we changed the local law for floodplain protection that said you couldn't infill a, a property and push water on your neighbors. And so my concern is that, like, a project like this is, the people who would be the residents are, are like the most vulnerable members of our community, and that we'd be, you know, putting them on an island in our floodplain, and, and pushing water on, you know, on my neighbors here in the village. And that, you know, that doesn't sit well with me. The, and I guess that's the nature of the project, too, that, you know, we want housing. I'm, I'm not opposed to, like, improvement of housing in that neighborhood. I, I love it. I went to that meeting where the county proposed to each of the villages about this, like, the four-block program, but I really liked the, the, all the programs for, like, first-time homeowners, and that they were going to, like, put real money into fixing up the houses, like, like, the total structure of furnaces and kitchens, plumbing, electrical, like, it wasn't just a paint and facade program. And so I, I really liked that part of fixing up the entire neighborhood of that four-block radius, but I don't like this big apartment building where they're going to infill, like, a whole block and push water on everybody else. That's not the type of, of smart building that I think is okay. And, and also, like, the financial assistance, a million-dollar relief to an Ithaca company for this, at a thirty-year time span, to make this project happen, just, you know, that, that doesn't sit well with me either. I don't understand the equation.
Thank you. And you're, I'd hate to cut you off, but there are five minutes allowed for each participant. You've reached that maximum, and greatly appreciate your, your comments and your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, let's see, I don't know who is on the iPhone, so I'll, I'll skip, I will skip ahead to Shanna Stevens. Would you like to make comment? Thank you so much. She's just here for more information. Okay, I see iPhone. Would you like to make comment?
Yes, please. This is Ron Pelton. I'm a village trustee in the village of Awigo. Is, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to echo some of the things that trustee Everly had stated about the accessibility, or I mean, the assessment of the property. When the cost is thirteen million, it's being assessed at five hundred eighty thousand, the mathematics just don't match up in my head. And I also noticed in the statement here, it said, "Without this pilot, this will not be financially viable." Well, what happens after the thirty years? It will be financially viable then? Will they pay the proper tax amount, or will that be reassessed at a lower rate? Then, I also, the EDU rates are incorrect. As I am the sewer commissioner, there was eighteen EDUs there, not five. So the number that you had given us, as far as the dollar increase, is not actually correct. It was, should be fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight, because it would be twenty-seven new EDUs, not forty, because there was eighteen there previously. Then the other concern I had is actually for the school budget. You know, the estimated thirty-three children, I believe, was the number, and the average student cost about twenty-five thousand dollars a year to school. And I know a certain percentage, I think about thirteen thousand comes from the state in funding, but the village and other entities have to provide that other income, and I only see seven thousand dollars going towards school annually from this project. And those are my concerns with this. I don't have anything else.
Ms. Curtis, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation, and thank you, Kevin. If there's anybody else that is present, and, okay. Sorry. Lee Ann Tenny, would you like to make comment? You have to unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
It's all right. My name is Lee Ann Tenny. I'm Director of Economic Development and Planning for Tioga County. I'm speaking here today in support of the request for financial assistance application made by Temple and Liberty LLC. This project is vital to the village's, Awigo's desire to improve the condition of housing throughout the village. The following is noted in the village's comprehensive plan. The housing needs of a community are a central element in planning for the future. Improving the condition of housing stock, increasing the overall housing values, and establishing mixed-income developments will advance the housing stock, making the village more appealing to diverse array of visitors, potential residents, and current residents. Additional goals and strategies outlined in the village comprehensive plan include: The goal to improve conditions of housing stock by developing a comprehensive system of campaigns, renovations, restorations, and new construction that work in concert to improve the condition of housing throughout the village; And also the goal to establish mixed-income housing by attracting quality mixed-income developments that promote stable and economically healthy neighborhoods; And partnering with various agencies to provide a variety of housing options for residents. Additionally, representatives from the village board participated and provided input in the 2017 Tioga County Housing Study. The study addresses the need for neighborhood revitalization with the goal to revitalize neighborhoods in select villages, including the village of Awigo. The strategies outlined under this goal include: The demolition and rehabilitation of housing in specific neighborhood blocks; The new construction of moderate-income rental properties to create mixed-income neighborhoods. As well, the goal to attract capital investment from public and private investors listed the following strategy: The rehabilitation of housing and new construction of multifamily housing for middle, moderate-income families and senior independent living. I wanted to also mention that we have been in partnership, one of the other partners on this project is Tioga Opportunities, and it should be noted that Tioga Opportunities will be managing, would be managing this project. So we will have, clearly have, a local input and supervision of the project, once it's up and running, so it will be managed by Tioga Opportunities. As well, Tioga Opportunities has developed a first-time homebuyer project, and they are also pursuing funding, we're assisting them with an application to pursue funding for rehab of single-family homes, also identified in the study. So I know some of the comments made earlier, this isn't a single action by the Land Bank or IDA or Tioga Opportunities. There's multiple efforts put forth for those items that were identified in the study. So, so I wanted to be clear that there, there is, this isn't just this project, there's much more going on as well. And I think that's all I really wanted to say, other than the Temple and Liberty LLC project ticks all the boxes as identified by the village of Awigo, as well as the countywide objectives outlined in the housing study. Removal of blighted properties and construction of forty-five rental units will have significant positive impact to the community and address the well-documented need for low- to moderate-income safe dignified housing options in the, in the village of Awigo. That's all I have. Thank you, Christine. We have Rusty wants to speak. Apparently Rusty Fuller, who's a village trustee, I believe, is asking to speak as well, Kevin.
Christine, you're still on mute.
Thank you.
Am I on?
Rusty Fuller is up next for public comment.
Thanks, Christine. So I'm Rusty Fuller, village trustee and resident of that neighborhood. I don't have much to say here, as this is not a question and answer period. I do have forty-seven questions that I'd love to talk with various folks about, so I'll have to do that another time. And I'm not going to take up your time with all my thoughts and, and questions right now. Hopefully, there's, it'll be other options, certainly will be at the village board, about answering all these thoughts and questions. That's it. Thanks, Christine.
So I believe I've requested all in attendance to speak. Eric Knowles, would you like to make a public comment today, or just viewing today?
I'm just viewing, looking for more information.
Okay, thank you. If I've missed anybody who's here hoping to make public comment, will you please make a comment now in the comment box? And I'll give it just one minute for a review to make sure we haven't missed anybody. In the meantime, I'd just like to respond to a few of the concerns noted with some factual information to hopefully provide a little bit more insight regarding the, the floodplain and spreading water out to the neighboring properties. One of the requirements from the Tioga County Planning Director has been that they review their impact to the surrounding neighborhoods and, and don't disperse any additional flood images to the surrounding area, so that has been taken into consideration and addressed during the site plan process. Regarding the high cost of the materials and the project itself, and the low assessed value that is related to the type of housing this is, and the fact that New York State wants to encourage these developments in the state, so they automatically receive a lower assessed value than a comparable complex might otherwise. And just to answer the question on what a deviated pilot schedule means, that just means it's not our standard ten-year pilot agreement. I don't see that we've missed any, any other participants, so at this time, I will give the floor back to our Vice Chair, Kevin Gillette.
Well, I think the, your, your time period is up. If we have no one else to speak, we conclude the public hearing.
Thank you. And thank you all for your participation. We greatly appreciate it. Kevin Callahan.
Yes, Mr. Gillette, did you want to put some exhibit?
Say, say that again?
Did you want to put some exhibits on the record? Like affidavit and the hearing notice? It's okay if you don't. I just, usually they do.
Ralph, even. Christine, I guess that's something I, you know, I would leave up to you.
Sure. So, Mr. Callahan, I do have the affidavit of notice of publication. Should I be sharing that on the screen, or just verbally acknowledging it? If you could.
I'm sorry, I can go off the record. So usually, the hearing officer will say, "Please spread upon the record Exhibit One, the affidavit, Exhibit Two, the notice," with whatever exhibits you want attached to the deposition.
Okay.
I have, I think, that's, it's sent me four exhibits, and I can mark them whatever you'd like, or, or not. It's up to you, but that's usually what we do.
Yes, please. So Joe Mayor's office sent you all of our applicable documents?
Right, yep.
We would like to note those tonight, please.
I'll, I'll just mark. I'll, I'll just mark them in the order that they came.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I second what Christine says.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Well said, good night.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, um.
Yes.
Who do I send this to? Usually I send it to Mr. Mayor's office, do I do that tonight, too, or somebody else?
Yes, please, send that to Mr. Mayor's office, that's perfect.
Okay, all right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know.
Bye.